And home building, or farming, or any other land destroying activities. In closing, I want to assure this commission that we want to work with you in dealing with this issue before it's all, we're all in together. But, we are the ones, most of the people in concern maybe, we are the ones who are most affected by this nightmare. We live and we live with, as I told you, my house, my sun porch is eighty-one steps from the landline, where they will be mounting. There is a house on Homesville Road that is only ten steps from the landline, and nagging pain. Could you imagine? Because we are most affected, we think we deserve to be heard by this commission, not in some token way, but really heard. We would like to sit at a table with you and be able to talk with you. I invite you to come sit on my sun porch and see what I'm doing here. Walk over to Lake Cooper's Pond and see what's going to happen if there were issues there. See what we're going to be living with. Please involve us, we are not radicals, we are reasonable people, and, but we need protection, and we're depending on you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you. We do plan to work with you, and we are going to make this as soon as possible as we can get these meetings and everything underway. I don't see the reason for prolonging it. Richard, have a say.
I'd be glad to go in and settle. Like she said, they weren't going to be afraid to knock me and none of us up here, so I will work with them any way we can, just sooner we can too.
These are what I got.
I will, I'm ready.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. My major concern is to make sure what we do, not just something on paper, but something that's enforceable. And that's why we asked the IDA to do some fact finding for us, so it wasn't Duke Park, was it? The other side, it was somebody from us, fact finding, find out what legally, what they're going to do, what we can do, and what's enforceable to do. And that's what was important. So, yes, we, do you know what we want to do with this? What we can do to protect citizens, but also is enforceable.
And by the way, we are not, we're not, we're not addressing this totally at Duke Park. We've learned some things as we've gone along, just as you have. But, we, we're wanting to look down the road into the future. As I've told many people, it's my house today, it may be yours tomorrow.
And that's our goal as well. And as, as you can see, I think that the, John and his board done an excellent job. And I think, I can safely say, we learned more tonight than we have all through this whole process.
It's true.
So, we, we're moving in the right direction. So, we move along, and the invitation to your house will refresh must be served.
Really say you got to take a say to it.
All right, thank you so much. Moving along, we're, the agenda. Mr. Chairman, does the board have any questions? Do you have any questions on the agenda?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Hey, we'll go back and see what we should do.
You want to?
Hey, just playing a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, item A is just a minor revision to our, our civil rights policy with regards to just Wayne County Transit.
Transit, yes.
There are, we have certain requirements for policies as far as the way we handle complaints, as it's, as it is with regards to people's civil rights. This requirement is placed upon us so that we remain eligible for the FDA, the federal transit authority funds that fund the program.
We've got to do that to get the federal.
So, when, when the, when the federal government revises the regulations as far as those policies are concerned, we have to follow suit and then revise our own operating policies to make sure that we're in compliance, and essentially it's for brand compliance.
Anything else?
C. On C, I think we need a little more discussion on that one.
General process? How's the rest of the board here?
I don't know.
I don't see anything for me. Okay. We're not taking a motion to approve the agenda?
No motion.
You have a motion? Second? You have a second? Second, Mr. Wright? Any other questions other than Richard? Okay. Carl Rowe, please.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Kuytlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much, Tim. Appreciate it. Moving along. Item ten, and old business. Consider approval and adoption of policy concerning acquisition of right away without means, without name release. Mr. Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, you had, we had tabled this at the previous meeting.
Yes.
Under the advisement of council, and the staff in the council is now advising the board to consider removing it from the agenda.
Yes. Is it ready?
I'll explain that again. We'll remove it, we will not be able to.
It was tabled to this meeting, so that's the only reason.
In other words.
Reappeared on the agenda.
I'm not going to do this. We're not going to adopt the acquisition right away without name release.
Right. I agree with that.
Yeah, we need to remove it. Yeah.
Yeah.
You got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Carl Rowe for the change of members.
Mr. Kuytlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Tim. Eleven, new business. Consider approval, approval warrant, request for proposal for the provision of architectural service, CDBG grant for the mental health facility. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the board may remember, a few months ago, we had, you had authorized staff to pursue a CDBG grant for the construction of a new mental health facility. Part of the process of trying to pursue that is to secure assistance from an architectural firm to prepare that grant on our behalf. There are several CDBG requirements that are, that have to be met, and doing a request for proposals for the architectural services is one of the beginning parts of that process. We tasked our regional commission to do this on our behalf, under the guidance of our staff, but using their professional expertise. They, they drafted and released a request for proposals to do just that on the county's behalf. In response, we've received one, two, three, we've received five responses, and as you'll see in your packet, they have done a very comprehensive evaluation of those services. Several of them were highly ranked, so it left, it left a little flexibility for staff to actually go through the RFPs and basically decide between the three highest firms that received points. There were three firms, actually, that were essentially tied for first in the response. And after staff review, we're recommending to the board that we award the project to a group called Carter Watkins and Associates, and then if the board would give me just a moment, I'll explain kind of what the, what the criteria that helped us decide that. Essentially, although all three firms were very impressive and had very impressive credentials, this firm in particular, in recent history, has done three mental, sorry, four mental health facilities via CDBG grant awards, two health departments, overall fifteen recent CDBG projects. And really what set them apart from the other two that also received twenty-seven total points is that they have, have a one-hundred percent success rate in achieving the CDBG grant when it relates to submitting for, for the construction of a mental health facility. And just to remind the board, essentially, there's no monetary award as far as this is concerned. Basically, the way this works is that they're going to submit the grant to us, sorry, they're going to submit the grant on our behalf, and they'll only be awarded six percent of the total cost of the project if the grant is awarded. If the grant is not awarded, there will be, there'll be no cost to the county. And of course, that's the same for every firm that submitted, but, but their fee is consistent with what the other firms proposed, which was six percent of the total construction cost. So, at this, at this time, staff's prepared to make a recommendation that we go with Carter Watkins, and then if the board approves that, then we'll transmit that information to the, to the regional commission tomorrow, so they can get going on the grant submission, which will be due in April.
Thank you. Any questions on that, Tim? You have a, you have a motion?
Yeah, I'm not the one.
I have a motion. You have a second, by Mr. Wright, motion by Ms. Coates? If there's any questions, Carl Rowe, please.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Kuytlin?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Tim. Moving along here. Item twelve, appointments, regional development center, heart of Georgia, appointments, thirty-five members. Let's go.
Yes. We have to appoint, we'll have to appoint Joey Barnes-Makes to the board.
Okay. We hear a second?
I'll say.
You have a second? Okay. Any questions? Carl Rowe, please.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Kuytlin?
Yes.
Tim, do I need to expand on that again?
What we'll do is we'll submit the names to the three municipalities.
That's right. We submit the name to the three municipalities.
And all municipalities have to agree.
That's right. I scored out.
And Jesse. And they vote on it. The, the majority vote will win on this.
Right.
Right.
So, they don't all have to be majority, but they all have to agree.
No, they all have to agree. Majority vote, majority vote will win on this.
Majority.
Yeah.
The county and both cities.
They have to agree.
Yeah. County and all three cities.
All municipalities have to agree.
I'm telling you. They have to agree, but the vote of each municipality, the entire book has to be unanimous. The vote of, in other words, the script passes it, they pass it three, two, it passes.
Yes.
Yeah. That's what we mean. But all municipalities have to agree on that point of point.
That's correct.
Yes.
All right.
I thought I was trying to tell him, told him that he was the next meeting, he would know. She can come and talk to me, she don't talk to me.
Moving along, we, we all know it, yeah. Thirteen, items with the county administrators.
Mr. Chairman, I've done.
Sir? Outstanding, yeah. You're ready then. Moving along here. Items with the county commissioners. Mr. Wright?
Yeah, I know, I can get with the elderly and the building, I got to talk to them tomorrow. Other than that, other than that, I was told, probably do, they're going to do on the gentleman that know, they pick up the trash on Roadhouse Road by a week ago, but they got a good job on it, it's back again, but like I said, it's a tedious thing, we, we pick it up about once a month, and I done talked to the people that brought her, and I told Eric Coughlin and Scrim, they, they got it, washed up cover, make sure they, the dump truck covered, let me, trash, it's going to be hard.
Most of them are covered, with that many trucks going out there, nothing going to fly.
Yes, I agree with it.
So, we just need to keep cleaning it, no problem. We got the prison, we, we got two prisoners.
And also, also, me and Ellen, I went down and talked to them about the road, the way they're tearing the road up. Anyway, me and Ellen, I talked about, I think we got, we got that, that we get some help on that. Ellen, if he takes care of that, we, we can do that road research, city, never told him, they got town, town all the way to three of one.
Okay. Mr. Wright?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out.
Ms. Coates?
Yeah, two or three things, just real quick. Commissioner Rowan and I, really back before this board took office, again, looking at some areas of improvement, LA race. We've discussed improving some picnic areas, we've discussed even possible making a little beach for the kids on one of the opposite sides of the lake as the picnic areas. I think, according to the administrator, we've got to apply to DNR to, to do that, and if that's fine with the board, we're going to look at it. I think the costs are going to be very minimal to the county, we just, Commissioner Wright, again, has worked hard on that. Just going to try to improve the lake, a lot of people, we can use it, a lot of people from out of town, saying we can make it.
And just by many people use that lake out there, they do that swimming pool right here at Pam.
Yeah.
We had all them in the lake, the swimming pool, they have no roof.
I think, can you go ahead with the application? Do we need to have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in discussions with our environmental engineer, what I would like to do, if it would please the board, and, you know, maybe a motions order or not, I'll leave that to the chair. What we'd like to do is, at a very minimal cost at least, have our environmental engineer, we want to, you know, basically have the commissioners who are interested in it, basically mark off on a map the area that's proposed, and then we'll, we'll have our environmental engineer work up a cost estimate as to what type of design work it would take to put an application together. And that way, we can, we could give the board a better idea of not, not only what it would cost to do the environmental engineering for the application, but we could also get an idea from the engineers to what type of construction cost we looked at. Some of the things that he had told me when I had mentioned it to him, that the permitting process would change greatly, would just depending on how much vegetation was disturbed, whether, and whether the vegetation was in the water versus out of the water, and then it would also make a difference as to whether there was actually sand below the water line or that it was just sand above the water line. So, basically, we would just need to get a few of those questions answered from the interested board members, and then we could have him put a proposal together for the entire board's consideration.
Most of the work we can do here at house, though. Well, months on it, we can do it at house.
Yeah, I'd say that's probably a fair statement.
We shouldn't be spending that much money.
That's right. Okay, two more, got two more quick items. Let's, let's have a motion for that. Okay, let's have a motion for that. You make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second, all right. Carl Rowe, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Kuytlin?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Ms. Coates, go ahead.
Just formally, let the other commissioners know, and the public know, Chairman Thomas and myself have been, and our county administrator have been meeting with the city of Jessup on consolidation and some services. It's been in the paper from the city side, but just from the county side, we're looking at possibly joining fuel calls, maintenance shop, other areas of consolidation. Everything has been going great, we've had great talks, and hope to save everybody in Wayne County some money by doing these, and hope we can move forward with more consolidated items, that will save the taxpayers money in the future. Third thing, real quick, I have had a lot of complaints about our all green, with our trash pickup, and I think under the last board, and I could be mistaken here, they were supposed to provide the public with a calendar or something, I don't know if it was on the county's left side, or calendar of their pickup days, I don't think they've done that, they're still behind on their routes.
Recycling?
Behind on their recycling. I think they were also supposed to look at consolidating some of their routes and make them a little easier, and changing some of their routes. Just let the public know again, we're looking into this, and their contract, Mr. Chairman, when did you say it was up?
Yes, sir, I think in November.
November of this year. The whole contract will be bid out again.
So, right.
Again, just to let the public know that we're working on this issue of trash pickup.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anything else?
Keep in mind, praying for Mr. Thomas.
Yeah.
Thomas probably.
Yes, yes, yes.
He's, I think he's still in the hospital.
He's in hospital, yeah. We should let's give prayers to him for his recovery. And, yeah, he is great. That's all, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have one or two things. First and foremost, please charge to my head and up my heart, and I want to recognize the esteemed Vice Chairman of the Board of Education, who is visiting with us tonight, Mr. Nick Ellis. If you all would, if you'd raise your hands, Ellis, and there he is, okay, thank you so much for joining us. As a matter of fact, some of the things we talked about is going to include the Board of Education, especially when, when we join fuel costs. When we're looking at that, I mean, we could save a ton of money on per gallon of fuel if we all bought from the same person, you know, so, and we'll have things like that. So, we're not talking about consolidating city, county government yet, but I'm so long jumping the gun. Anyway, what, I got one or two things, I'm going to be brief because we, we've stretched the time. The office, complaint was brought to my knowledge by the office ladies, said that a complaint was lodged against our office about our purchasing practices, of how we buy things, and specifically office supplies or whatever. So, you know, we want to buy local whenever we can, because I think our local vendors need that, and we do that, we know them, and I think we're getting the best service and everything from our local vendors. And if it's not, I don't reach it too expensive, I think that we should, you know, not, not that we owe them anything, I mean, if, if people trying to make a living off the taxpayers, I don't see that, but, because we're obligated to taxpayers to spend their money as much as they can. But, I took it for myself to have the ladies, and you all have a copy, this on your desk, eh? To run a, a, a year's tally of what we purchased from our office block contractors. I want you to keep in mind that we have two state contracts, okay? One of our state contracts was Staples, and one is with Office Depot. Now, buying from a state contract, we, we definitely get a better deal, because we're linked with other counties and ACCG, and double negotiated by ACCG. But, a lot of times, it, it's more convenient for us to buy locally, we can run over there and get what we need, or whatever, and whenever the cost is close, even though it might be a few pennies or whatever more, we, we will buy locally than to pay for shipping or whatever. But, I wanted to bring this to your attention to show everybody, and I have copies of this, of what we spent, okay? If you bear with me. On our state contract for Staples, for this year, or for last year, or twenty-fourteen, we spent for office supplies, four thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents. For Office Depot, our other state contract for last year, we spent nine thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-six. Two local vendors that we use in Jessup, is that Johnson's?
Johnson's Office.
Office Supplies. Last year, we spent eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-one For our last local vendor that we deal with is VIP Printing and Office Supply. Last year, we spent forty-six thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and thirteen cents. Can you guys say one?
Yes, sir.
But, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that, that we are above board, and that we try to buy local when possible, and we do, and this should solve a complaint that we had, unlike a sample complaint. But, this is, this is what we done last year. The total, okay? The total of all those, you would like to not commission?
I was processing. I just wanted to hear. It's a lot of money.
Drew?
I can give you a.
You got to know you just added up, anyway. That's pretty a bit of money. But, any questions on that? All right. Next thing I want to address is, there seemed to have been maybe misunderstanding, or lack of orientation, or whatever the case may be, with, with our resolution for Wayne County Commissioners, the appointment of our Recreation Board. I just want to refresh everybody's memory that the powers and duties of our Recreation Board, they have no authority over personnel at all. They can't address personnel at all. We've done this through a resolution. I need to inform the Commissioners, that a resolution, we can resolve that board at any time we feel necessary. I think it's a good thing, that's why I'm, I'm glad it's in place, but I think it needs to go in the right direction. Also, that any Commissioner, you can appoint, you appoint E at any time you feel necessary, because it's a resolution. Okay? You have that power? All right. Now, according to this, the powers and duties, the Recreation Board shall provide advisory council for conducting and maintaining systems and supervising parks and recreation for the county, in such a way as to employ the leisure of the people in the wholesome and constructive manner. In particular, it shall process only the following advisory responsibilities. To provide, to provide advice and recommendations for the operation of public playgrounds indoors and our outdoor recreation centers, concessions, and other recreational facilities owned or controlled by the county. B, to recommend, recommend the setting aside leasing or acquisition of land or buildings within or without the county for use of parks, playgrounds, recreation centers, or for the other recreational purpose. C, to advise for the establishment and maintenance of a supervised recreation program. D, to receive, to review the annual park and recreation budget requests made annually to the county administrator for the Board of Commissioners' approval. E, to submit an annual report to the county administrator and county administrators, which shall include a financial statement of monies received, and expenditures, and the description of all activities sponsored by the board during the year. F, to serve as advisory board to the park and recreation director and county administrator regarding the need of the community regarding recreation program, facilities, and activities. G, to review and recommend to the park and recreation director enactment of policies and rules for the operation of the recreation system. H, to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of the recreation programs. I, to recommend a system of fees and charges for use of park and recreation facilities or for participation in recreation programs. J, to adjudicate complaints, disputes, or other grievances from the public arising out of park and recreation activities. K, to exercise such other powers and duties as may be delegated to it from time to time by the county administrator and Wayne County Commissioners, as permitted by law. M, L, to act as ambassadors for the Wayne County Recreation Program to represent and speak for recreation departments at official functions. Personally, at this point, I'm, I'm a little disappointed in the leadership of this board. I pray that it will, that it will adhere to these rules and regulations and move forward and do the things that we designed the board to do, to adjudicate complaints and everything, and if there are complaints, then that's what we're trying to put in here, and to do something about it. to adjudicate complaints and everything, and if there are complaints, then that's what they're supposed to hear and to do something about them. To remediate them, to get with whoever, the director and everybody, to work these things out. So I hope we're moving forward with that, because we have two factions in this. We have a county administrator who's in charge of hiring, firing, and we have a personnel policy that everybody's due, due process. I didn't appoint a lit committee. Our point is somebody to, to hear these problems, to feel these problems, to give some kind of solutions to these problems, to whoever, to, if the fees need to be changed, if there's rules need to be changed with recreation, that's gonna be under their realm, let's change them. Other than that, I see no need for call meetings when these things that were brought up could be handled through our regular meetings. Also, we don't need to get involved in, in dealing with our personnel and handling our things that might be in personnel files. Just housekeeping things that we need to keep in mind. Uh, I think that it's a good thing, I think, I was in favor of the Red Board, I think it's still a good thing. And I believe that if, if we give it time to operate and to do the things that it's designed to do, that was appointed to do, that it will work fine. I think that these things will work themselves out. But other than that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I didn't look at the resolution, that was the previous board review, and the previous board. And just as y'all made that resolution, if we're not happy with it, and I'm not saying we're not, but if we're not happy with that, we can create a new resolution.
Well, Mr. Commissioner, like I said, if there's a resolution, you can strike it anytime you feel like.
That's right.
If you didn't vote for it, you don't like it, then you can vote with that. That's your argument. But I would like to see it do what it was designed to do, and not something else.
What was it designed to do?
I just read to you what it was designed to do.
Appears like nothing, man.
Okay.
Let's move forward.
Let's move forward then. Anything else? Okay, do I have them? Where we at? I need a motion for adjournment session.
Make a motion.